Good evening.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
Another change, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
And you're on.
I know, that's. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. And we're now reconvening in open session. My apologies, our executive session did run a bit over what we had anticipated. And now we're just working on a new little wrinkle in live streaming, but it's all being taken care of. So per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law is Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. And the school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. Members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on our Gil-Montague Regional School District website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings, and it will have tonight's school committee meeting date. We will be live streaming shortly, but in the meantime, we're broadcasting on MCTV. And a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website after this meeting is completed. So this is our time to welcome our visitors. It would be the opportunity for public participation, which is policy BEDH. And that has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. But we have no one this evening who's choosing to participate remotely. If you are in our Zoom audience, welcome. Please remember, if you're just in the audience, please leave your camera and your microphone off. If you are joining us at some point, when you do, please definitely turn them on. Thank you. I think we'll move along to important events. Brian, please.
Well, Jane, the live stream notice just came up for us, so.
Okay, so now we are live streaming, everyone. Thank you.
So for event, upcoming events tomorrow night is the Turner's Falls High School National Honor Society Induction Ceremony at 6:00 PM. Tomorrow is also an early release day for professional development for all district schools. The Friends of Gil will hold their craft fair on Friday, December 9th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, December 13th, from 3:45 PM to 6:45 PM, Flu and COVID Vaccine Clinic will be held at Hillcrest Elementary School. On Wednesday, the 14th, at 5:45 PM in the Sheffield Cafeteria, the English Language Learner Parent Advisory Council will meet. All schools are undertaking a food drive right now that will continue until December 16th. I did just want to put out a reminder to people to, in donating non-perishable food items, to just check, double-check the expiration dates. Holiday vacation begins on December 23rd through January 2nd. There's no school on December 23rd, and students return on January 3rd. And that's it for events.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Student representative, this evening, we do not have a student representative report, but I expect Sina will join us at our next meeting and provide one, as she always does. So moving on to the superintendent's report, Brian.
Sure, and I'll, if, if everybody's okay with this, I'd like to recognize the two students now that we have with. Instead of waiting until the agenda, I've included information about the students in the report. First.
One second, Brian, could, I actually, they can turn their cameras on now if they'd like. I know they were coming in before.
They both have their cameras on, so they're good.
Great, thanks.
So the first award is the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership. We're very pleased to introduce one of the two recipients of the National School Development Council's Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership tonight. It's Turner's Falls High School senior Chloe Folk. Chloe, do you want to give a little wave? Chloe has made a commitment to help and support others in our school and community. She's been a member of the Gay-Straight Alliance and is among the first cohort of Turner's Falls High School students to be trained as active bystanders. And she's also continued to volunteer her time and mentorship to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Chloe is one of the top-ranked students of the class of 2023 and has an incredible grade point average of 104.9 on a scale of 100. She's also qualified for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship for her outstanding performance on the MCAS exams. Chloe's maintained honorable status throughout high school and has earned membership in the National Honor Society while consistently challenging herself by taking the most challenging and rigorous classes, including AP Language and AP Calculus courses this school year. Chloe is also a recipient of the Williams College Book Award. And while these community contributions and academic achievements are remarkable, really for any student, Chloe has done so under incredibly challenging circumstances. During our interview, Chloe shared with me that she's a self-taught reader, but that her diagnosis of dyslexia has constantly thrown additional barriers in front of her at school. She shared that in eighth grade, a reading teacher showed some of these techniques with her, showed some techniques with her that allowed her to make significant improvements in her reading and spelling capabilities. Chloe really is a model of perseverance and persistence, and her willingness to push herself to be a truly outstanding student who is dedicated to helping others is an inspiration to all of us. Chloe does not, at this point, have a top choice for college for her undergraduate work. She intends to continue on to graduate school with plans for a career as a physical therapist. Congratulations to Chloe Folk.
Congratulations, Chloe. Would you like to say anything to the committee?
You could convince your dog to bark for us.
He won't bark.
Well, great.
Very sweet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chloe. Congratulations. The second student that I would like to, wanted to let you know, Chloe and Brayden are both John and Abigail Adams recipients, so we'll recognize them tonight for that as well. In addition to another group of seniors who will join us at our next school committee meeting. We're also very proud to announce this year's recipient of the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents Award for Academic Excellence, Turner's Falls High School senior Brayden McCord. Brayden also is one of the top-ranked students in the class of 2023 with a remarkable grade point average of 104 on a scale of 100. He's consistently challenged himself by completing the most rigorous academic courses and has also earned membership in the National Honor Society. Brayden has also maintained a constant presence on the Turner's Falls High School honor roll. In addition to this award, Brayden has also qualified for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. He's been a recipient of the Climate Science Award, the Advanced Algebra Award, and the Maker Lab Award. And he has currently taken college courses at Greenfield Community College. While being an outstanding student takes an enormous amount of time and dedication, Brayden has also maintained a busy personal schedule. He's been a four-year member of the boy soccer and track and field teams and has maintained part-time work throughout his years in high school. Brayden has also exhibited a dedication to service in our community, volunteering at the Irving Senior Center, Bay State Franklin Medical Center, and has regularly participated in Monte's March to End Hunger. As part of the selection process, I hold a brief interview with candidates. One of the first things that I asked about is, was there a person, an experience, a teacher, an event, or something in their lives that inspired them to become an outstanding student? Brayden shared that his mother was a pharmacist and that when he was in eighth grade, she received a cancer diagnosis. This drove him to work very hard so she would see his dedication and that he would be able to make her proud. This past spring, when his mom lost her battle with cancer, Brayden continued his hard work and dedication in her memory. This deep personal challenge has driven nearly every aspect of Brayden's life. In addition to the community service I previously mentioned, Brayden has been most passionately driven to fight cancer. He's participated in the Jimmy Fund Walkathon and has been a regular participant in the Relay for Life. Brayden has also been a part of the Bay State Franklin Medical Center Student Ambassador Program and the Envision Medical Program through Tufts University. Through each of these experiences, Brayden continues, continued his commitment to learn more about how he could battle on to help everyone he could. And this continues to drive his aspirations for the future. Brayden hopes to attend Harvard University or Tufts University, where he plans to pursue a career as a radiologist, allowing him to continue to fight along any, anyone who is fortunate enough to have such a devoted, kind, and brilliant mind on their team. Congratulations to Brayden McCord.
Congratulations, Brayden. Would you like to say anything to the committee?
Just run the award, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. We're so pleased.
Congratulations again, Brayden. And we put you guys up front. You're welcome to stay, but I'm sure that you probably have a ton of work to do. So you might want to get back to work, and congratulations to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to add just a little bit more information into, in the, from the report. Wanted to say thank you to elementary physical education teacher Liz Tyler for inspiring and organizing the first annual Turkey Trot held the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I'm excited about that being an annual event. It was really fun for a first time around. There were tons of parents there. I also wanted to say thank you to the entire elementary faculty and staff for all the support that they gave in making sure that all students who wanted to could participate in this event. We had great weather that day, and it was really a ton of fun. I also wanted to congratulate Turner's Falls High School Music Director Alyssa Camo and her music program students, who played to a completely packed auditorium last Friday evening in their dark days of December middle and high school winter concert. It was really interesting that when we got in there, my, you know, my wife and, and daughter and son had a hard time finding a seat or a place that they could sit together. And there were tons of people in standing room, and I had mentioned to Jane that it, it would have been really difficult if too many more people had come. There were no seats available. So congratulations to Alyssa and her students for filling that auditorium. I did also want to thank the music boosters and the enormous number of businesses who donated to their cause as a fundraiser for the music program, where they had a very successful raffle at the concert. And with that many attendees, I'm sure that the fundraiser went really well. As far as COVID trends, we are seeing, although the CDC has changed us from low to medium in Franklin County, likely to the, as a result of the impact of increased COVID found in wastewater. Because if you look at the chart that I update every two weeks, the reported numbers are not terribly high in any of our communities. And so it's really clear that people who are being diagnosed are relying on home kits. And we're seeing fewer and fewer people who seem to be reporting cases to public health authorities. And that's it for my report for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Moving on to the Business and Operations Report, Joanne, please.
Hi. So I just have a few things for you. The fiscal '24 budget, you had received your proposed revenues for that. And the only numbers that we really can move around on would be our E and D, school choice, the amounts that we use from each of those. And then the numbers that I presented to you at the last meeting included Chapter 70 with an estimate based on flat enrollment. But what I've learned from the Department of Education during a seminar today was that it looks like our enrollment for Choice Out and Charter Out is declining. So while that's good number, good news, that Choice Out and Charter Out enrollments are going down, it's bad news that it also reduces our foundation enrollment, which will in turn reduce our ability to get extra Chapter 70. So the estimate that I had given you preliminarily at the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, I'm thinking is high. So I gave you about, about a $700,000 increase. And I believe that number is going to be maybe 200. I'll have more information on that as I work these numbers, but preliminarily, it looks like that number's going to go down. So I think in your agenda, there's a place to talk about the budget. And so when we get to that, we can talk about how much we're talking about using from E and D and from school choice, and we can adjust those numbers. On January 10th, I'll have a preliminary budget for you, and that'll be using whatever revenue number we land on.
Do you want me to share this, pull up any of the documents and share the screen for you?
Not, not yet. I think during, when we're talking about the budget, when everybody has a chance to weigh in on the numbers, then we can share it then.
It's actually not in our business section this evening. We cover it here.
Okay. So we can share, we can show the projected, the preliminary revenue sheet. Are you trying to share that, Brian? Okay. Okay, so this is the preliminary revenue. And on the top line, you can see my estimate for Chapter 70. That's the number that I'm thinking. It could be 200,000. It could be even less of an increase than that. If it's something in that range, I'd be surprised, based on the numbers I'm seeing. So the numbers that we can talk about will be the school choice revolving, which is all the way at the bottom, where we're using 700,000, just, just a slight increase from the prior year. And then excess and deficiency, where we're using 250,000 in the middle of the top section, which is not an increase. So Brian, can you share the revolving account sheet? To the historical revolving and E and D. Okay, so on this sheet, you can see the, on the top box, the school choice revolving, you can see the 700,000 that we're saying we're going to use. Now, the 550 that we believe is going to come in as revenue, that number looks like that might also go up, because it does look like our school choice in numbers are increasing. So the 550 could go up. And I don't have an estimate on what exactly that'll go up to yet. But we could adjust that 700, you know, up to 800 or 900. If, you know, if you're comfortable doing that, and that's just going to bring down your ending balance. And so in a couple of years, we won't have the surplus there. Then if you can scroll to the bottom of that page, E and D use, this year, our E and D was certified at 11,121,000. And so we could use more than the 250 that I have estimated there, so that way we stay away from the 5% cap. So those are some numbers that we can all talk about. If you want to close that now, Brian. If anyone has any input there, I'd be happy to hear what people have to say about the revenue.
Bill?
I just have a question about, you said the relative to the $700,000. You said the, the Choice Out and the Charter Out are declining. And therefore, the Chapter 70 is, is not going to be increased that much. Are you saying that the total student population is declining?
Yes, the total student population. So when we talk about our foundation enrollment, we're talking about the students that we are financially responsible for. So they are the students who live in our towns. And they might go to Gil-Montague, but they might charter out or choice out. And so while our enrollment within Gil-Montague schools has remained stable, both, you know, for our students that live here and we have slightly more school choice in, the number of students that have gone to charter and the number of students that choice out has declined. So we're financially responsible for them, but right now, it looks like those numbers have come down.
Right, I understand. I just want to clarify that the foundation enrollment is all the potential. You're saying that fewer kids are, percentage-wise, are choosing to go somewhere else. But that in general, we are, our student population is declining regardless of whether they're choice or not, right? That is what you're saying, trust me.
Yeah, our, our overall population within our buildings is stable.
That's right.
Overall population of foundation is reclining, declining.
I get it.
So we've had a good number of students who have moved out of the community but have chosen to remain enrolled in our schools, which is a positive, but it has a negative impact on our, because we lose those students from our foundation enrollment.
Right. I got it.
That's a good, good point to make, Bill, though, because it, some of these terms can be a bit confusing. Any thoughts about whether we should think about spending a bit more out of E and D this year? Are we close to the maximum allowed, Joanne?
Yes. We are. Which, which is why I think that we can use more from there. So and when we build the budget and we're looking at our choice expense and our charter expense, those expense numbers are going to decline in the fiscal '24 budget. Well, they'll decline at least for the fiscal '23 costs.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts about that?
Okay, so if I can just make a recommendation on this.
Yes, if you would.
Okay, so if we increase our E and D usage up to 400,000 and we increase our school choice up to 900,000, those can be some early numbers for us. And that'll take care of maybe half of our lost Chapter 70, but not all of it.
Nick?
When will we know what the Chapter 70 number is?
About a week before we vote the final budget. The budget will not be out until March.
It's always a challenge. I just think that's very difficult.
It's worse when we have a new governor coming into office, because the budget is delayed by a month.
Okay, unless anyone else has any input in that.
What was the second number? 400 from, from E and D and?
So E and D, we will change from 250 to 400.
Yeah.
And school choice will change from 700 to 900.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so the next thing I have for you are grants. And so we touched, included a summary of our grants. And these are the grants that we've had last year and this year. And so on this, you can see the Esser Funds. So there are some significant Esser Funds there, but they are allocated for use in fiscal '22 and use in fiscal '23, and in some cases, use in fiscal '24. I included the purpose of each of those grants for you. And then when we look at our grants for fiscal '23, we have to assume that our grant revenue in fiscal '24 is going to be pretty similar to fiscal '23. So back down closer to 1 million or 1,000,001 will be our estimated grant revenue. The, we did receive a Community Compact Efficiency and Regionalization Grant that the Six Sound Regional Planning Committee wrote a grant for the 125,000. So those funds will be available through the end of June 2024 for more work toward regionalizing. And then we have the Rural Money. So Esser III will be used in fiscal '24 in our budget process. There isn't more money that I've heard of coming to us in Esser Funds, but those funds that we received in fiscal '22 are good through September of 2024. So that'll be fiscal '25 in September. So we'll use them for the fiscal '24 budget, and then we'll use them again for summer work in summer of '24. Any questions on the grants? Okay.
These charts are really helpful, Joanne, though. People can look them over, you know, and refer back to them at times. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Joanne before she's finished? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have school committee reports. And for warrant subcommittee approval, we have fiscal year '23 warrant number 3321. It's an accounts payable to pay our bills. It's in the amount of $138,682.23, and we all have the details in our packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve that. So moved. Heather, thank you.
Second, Jennifer.
And Jennifer seconded. Any questions or discussion about that? We'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Moving on to the business section, we have recognition of senior award recipients, but I believe we said that was fine to have Brian do that during his presentation, and we were very happy they could join us. And I believe by our next meeting, we will have some additional recipients of the John and Abigail Adams Awards.
Yes, in the, the second recipient of the New England School Development Council Award as well.
Great, thanks.
Who's also an Adams Scholarship recipient, so we're kind of missing, missing the duplication of effort there.
There, thank you. Next on our agenda, an update on the district technology plan. And I know Tina is joining us for that. Hi, Tina.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. Sorry. Um, so last week, the last meeting, I was able to provide a small preview of the district technology plan on your agenda and your packet. It actually has the plan that I had submitted in 2023. Because, again, to remind the committee that I, my plan is, is always a um, to remind the committee that I, my plan is a, uh, is always a three-year technology plan. Um, and so therefore, um, for this fiscal year twenty four being the second year, I am just going to provide an update. Um, so I'm going to share my screen. And that. And so again, this would all look very familiar to everybody. As I had presented last year, um, a plan that started with just an overview that prior to twenty seventeen, we purchased end user devices for both secondary school and elementary teachers. That um, by twenty seventh and by twenty nineteen, um, we did a digital connectivity grant fund that actually built our neck, our network and our connectivity infrastructure. Um, we were able to get servers, switches, wireless access points and wiring that then really built that network that we needed in order to bring about the one-to-one Chromebook program that we started with the middle school. Um, so that by fiscal year twenty twenty two, um, we had grown the one-to-one program from secondary in, into the elementary school. Um, we replaced your projectors with touch view panels. So this are large format displays in every classroom. And we replaced your audio equipment with red cap access devices, which they basically are a very mobile um, audio devices and speakers. So, so that for, by fiscal year twenty twenty three, I had, you know, um, what I needed to start my next third, three-year plan. Um, we then started um, with the request for us to build our network servers. Um, the reason for the overview, just to, just to give context is that um, is just to draw that picture that one, we have end user devices. Everybody now is one-to-one. We also had the network connectivity, the infrastructure that we needed to build in order to create that one-to-one um, program. One of the things also about the large panel displays that we have in every classroom is that they are directly connected to the internet. So that having all that in the classrooms, one of the things that um, we're going to need in the next but well, basically this year is actually to upgrade our network servers. The problem with their network servers that they're already at a ten-year mark, right? So even if um, as much as I try to keep a five-year technology um, rotational plan, that never happens. Um, and so that basically the, the duct tapes are, that's keeping my ten-year network servers are already starting to fail. So that's already almost in the next end. That was supposed to have been done next, last year, but then, you know, COVID hit. So there were other priorities. Um, so it's this year, it's the time for, to, to, to do the network servers. What I'm hoping for is that if I could tap into the um rural schools grant, I might be able to just um, you know, do a really good job with this, with this new server. Um, for our connectivity and wifi and internet, one of the things that's happened also is that um, in year twenty four, we're actually hitting already that five-year mark of the swaps and, and switches. Um, having said that, the, you know, we do need to replace the apps so that we can stay within the cycle. But one of the nice things about this is that I had um, kept the E rate money available precisely because of this. So, um, what I'm hoping for is that somehow the Department of Education will again come up with this digital partnership grant that'll allow us to again have this um, new hundred and fifty thousand dollar um, money that we had five years ago. And if not that, then I've kept the E rate money um, available so that it would actually give us at least um, ninety percent of the cost of bringing the wifi and internet up to um, within a five-year, you know, renewed for the five-year cycle. Um, and following that is that we, so our teachers right now are already on a um, on, on, you know, mobile devices. So last year, I was able to get a grant again that allowed us to replace the um, teacher um, laptops that were also in a five-year, had hit its fifth year in the five-year cycle. And so that this year, I'm hoping that again, that I would be able to apply for the E C F grant, which would then allow us to um, replace the secondary, um, the secondary teachers laptops um, and devices. Meanwhile, for our students, basically what we're trying to always do is that, um, you know, because of this one-to-one program, the incoming kindergarteners and the incoming sixth graders will have new devices. And in order to do that, um, last year, what I did was I applied for the E C F grant um, and got that. And so now I'm hoping that I can reapply for that grant and get the other, um, the next batch of um, student Chromebooks, um, new student Chromebooks. One little thing that I just wanted to mention and, you know, and it's not yet, you know, time for us to decide, but then wanted to really put it in your thinking that last year, what we were able to do was we were able to provide our twelve graders, our graduating class, um, the Chromebooks for them to, to leave school with. Um, because they, you know, allowing them to then remain with the device that they're used to so that as they enter either, you know, college or more the workforce or, and, you know, transition out of high school. Um, what I was hoping for was that I would actually be able to find a way to do that again this year and the next year and the following year. So this is something that I'm hoping and I'm still working on and hoping that, that I, I'd be able to do um, for our, our graduating seniors. And then lastly, as um, I had presented last meeting, um, you know, the, the thought of flexible learning environment. Again, this is something that had started with just because we, I was trying to renovate our computer labs and making it, um, you know, bringing it up to um, far with with the rest of, you know, the technology that we already had. But then, again, the concept of flexible learning environment is bigger than just the thinking of like, you know, buying new furnitures for computer labs, which come to think of it, doesn't exist anymore if you really think about it because of our one-to-one, but that it's bigger than that. It's really actively thinking about adaptive pedagogies and being flexible in our um, teaching and our learning. And so, and that's pretty much it for this year's technology plan. Um, the small piece that um, that I had put, hadn't put there is that, yes, as much as there's the hardware and infrastructure and the networking piece of my technology plan, the budget is also has um, our software and our, our software budget and basically our instructional technology budget. Um, I was wondering if there were any questions. I didn't give anybody a chance to ask me anything the last time, so.
Any questions?
No.
Bill?
Thanks, um. I'm curious just how, for the impact of the cost of giving away Chromebooks, how much approximately does a Chromebook cost? And then also I realize in that um, calculation, we're talking less than forty uh, students, I believe, graduating. So it, it may not be that large an expense.
Right. I mean, if we were to still boot it, it like a, I mean, obviously, a, a brand-new device would be at three hundred dollars, um, with software and everything. But then at that certain point, once um, they, my thinking is that if they walked out with their Chromebook, basically what they already have, the device that they're already have right now in senior year, then, you know, I wouldn't, it, it really wouldn't, it would almost be, you know, at the most like a two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollar um, expense for us.
Thanks.
Anyone else have anything for Tina? Thank you, Tina. That helps a lot, the projection, how things are and, and where we're heading.
Jane, um, if I could interrupt, thank you very much, Tina. Um, I just have a request to um, move the final agenda item up for discussion now. Um, because Joanne has an obligation and she really wanted to be present for the proposal on the new school discussion. And I.
Okay. I think all we have to do is take a vote, and if everyone votes it, it's okay, we can move it up on the agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to move item F to the third position.
Bill moved, Heather seconded.
Okay, Bill moved it. Heather seconded. Take a roll call and move it up, Bill.
Yeah.
Heather?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, go ahead, Joanne.
So Joanne, if I could just preface this very quickly before you start, um, as, as you know, uh, we, I put in my did, school and district goals this year that we completing uh, a statement of interest regarding um, a new elementary school for Hillcrest. And our original thought was to um, consider building a, a newer Hillcrest onto the existing Sheffield building. And while that, um, that idea and initial proposal has not been scrapped at all. Um, Joanne had done a little bit of thinking around, maybe we should consider a standalone building as well. And so we wanted to take the opportunity to do some initial sharing, allow the school committee to ask questions. We have a tentative meeting with townsfolk that we can then bring those questions back to the town folks. And I would like to put this on the agenda again for our next meeting in December so that we can but bring back any answers to those questions. Um, and that we can get consensus from the committee on which of the two ideas we should write in earnest on um, beginning in January. So thanks, Joanne.
All right, so I'm going to share my screen so you can just get an idea of the what we're talking about here. So we had talked about adding on to Sheffield and closing Hillcrest and making an expansion and a renovation. Sort of like we did at the high school when the middle school was added. So then I was thinking, you know, when, when we talk about equity and we talk about transportation, you know, if our media students live within a mile of our elementary school, that means they don't get a bus. But they are our media students that maybe need a bus more than most some of the other students do. And so if we didn't have the elementary school where it's located now, but we have the elementary school farther out near the high school, then the students that live in the downtown area would receive, they, they would have transportation. They would then be eligible for a bus. So I remembered hearing from the town when they were talking about the DPW building that there was land over near the high school. And so I pulled up the assessors map, and that's what you can see on your screen. And so in lot sixteen, you can see the high school building there. And that would also include where the football field is. And then all of the baseball fields and soccer fields, a lot of the other playing fields would be on part of lot forty-three. But lot eleven that you see there up against Turner's Falls Road and near Randall Road, that's a wooded lot that sort of goes around Our Lady of Testahova Cemetery. There's also some wires that go through there, high tension wires. So that would not be an area that we could build under. And the wires are probably right around where the eleven is. So I checked in with Walter and Steve about those lots. And we talked about how the elementary schools could be repurposed. You know, perhaps the central office could be in the Sheffield buildings, that way we become handicap accessible. It could be for head start or playgrounds. The town would have the gym and auditorium space, park and rec. We're not really sure what they need, but those are just some ideas that we had tossed around. So what Walter responded was the lots are buildable, because that was one of my questions. And they, under the land use. And there is a municipal right-of-way, which is basically an extension of Randall Road that goes all the way to Hillside Road. It's not currently a road, but the town could improve that. And then he also mentions the transmission lines that go right through the middle of parcel eleven and forty-three. So I don't know what people think about that idea. You know, the, the complicating factor is maybe a an addition renovation would be more readily accepted by MSBA than a new standalone building. But not necessarily less expensive, right? A new building isn't necessarily less expensive than a renovation addition. So it's something that is worth looking into. But I'd like to hear what anybody else has to think about those.
Haley?
Is the thought that it would be um, the, the new build in, in the lands slot, uh, parcel that you talked about, would that be a pre-K to second school? Or, uh, are you talking about both? Hillcrest and Sheffield coming over there?
Right, pre-K to five.
Pre-K to five.
Thank you. Nick?
Is there room on that thing to build? I'm looking at the satellite imagery of it, and it looks like it's mostly taken up by fields, high school fields. Like sports.
The wooded area and part of that area that shows fields, I looked at it with Heath and it's not used, it's not fields. There's a the practice field for football is back there. That's not used.
Yeah, because it looks like basically they had fields of budding the, the high tension lines in the back. But if they're not using that, I don't.
Right.
I don't know if that's enough space, but.
Yeah, I, when I looked at the picture, I looked at the size of the high school and thinking if I could just reposition that back into that other lot, it looks like there would be plenty of room. And I think it wouldn't be a three-story building. Maybe it'd be more of a sprawling building, separating the lower elementary with the higher elementary, which is what we had talked about having at Sheffield with the addition as well.
Thanks. I think I said Jennifer and then Bill.
Yeah, thanks. So every, all the schools would be basically in that one area. And then what would happen to what is currently the Sheffield and Hillcrest schools?
Well, that's what we are not sure of. So those schools are owned by the town. So they would revert to the town. And, you know, possibly the central office stays in one. So one thing that cannot be in an MSBA-paid-for building is a central office. So we couldn't be in a new building or even a renovated new building. Uh, we would have to be.
One of the other things, one of the other things that the um, regional superintendents have been having a lot of conversation about, and it, it sort of came up at the same time, um, but we've had, been having some pretty extensive conversations about um, the need for uh, alternative and therapeutic settings and placements for students. And um, so certainly the idea of uh, I don't think Hillcrest is going to be usable for very much long without substant- very much longer without significant repairs. And so I, I wouldn't make a recommendation for that necessarily to be used for educating students. I mean, that, i- if the town would want it, that might be a decent place to relocate us for some period of time. Um, but the uh, the idea of potentially repurposing Sheffield for something that we might have to collaborate with the collaborative um, to provide some special programming in the district would keep it as an educational institution and therefore uh, shouldn't be impacted by existing MSBA loans that are out.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think I said Bill and then John.
Yeah, I just want to uh. I discussed this briefly with Brian the other day by email. Uh, my point being that. I believe all that land is district land, it's not town of Montague. Therefore. You're dealing with the town of Gill. In terms of who's gonna pay for this school building. As opposed to when it's on Montague's own land, it's clear that they're paying for it. I understand that we probably have. Developing some intra-district uh, choice issues of. When so many kids from one town are attending a, a school in the other town. In this case, only Gill Elementary. Then there can be some questions about. Who should be contributing to capital expenses, for example, because we're doing this intra-district. Um, choicing, but all of that aside. How are you gonna deal with that when you get a new school building for the Montague kids? Let alone. The anxiety that we will have to deal with as to when are you gonna close the Gill School? So um, there are issues that, those are kind of just emotional issues. But they are things that uh, you should consider. And am I correct, Joanne, that that's all school property, all those lots?
That is.
District, district pol, property. Different than Montague property. Thanks.
Right. So, you know, when the town was asking about that property for the DPW. They gave us the property, the property would get reverted back, right? We would give it back so they could build the DPW. That didn't happen, but. It, as a town elementary school, the land could be given back to Montague to build an elementary school.
I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying it is district land, it's different than Montague land, no matter how you. Montague could not have built the DPW on that land.
Unless the district.
Unless the district sold it to them. It's all paid for at some point. So it has to be. A monetary exchange, it's, it gets complex.
Okay, I said John and then Jennifer.
Yeah, uh, why uh, wasn't, uh, what, why? Uh, are not the Sheffield site or Sheldon site be considered suitable places to rebuild? It seems a lot of flat space around it and not trees, not power lines, what?
John, we haven't, we haven't scrapped that idea, we just wanted to bring this idea out for. A period of time, engage the committee first as a first step. Um, to see what questions they went, might have, bring our questions back to the town to get some clarification. And continue the discussion with the committee so that, you know, by the time we get into mid-January. And we're beginning the process of uh, writing a statement of interest in. In earnest uh, to, to meet the deadline for the committee to vote for, to approve it so that we can send it off to the state. That um, you know, we, we've made sure that we just didn't pigeonhole ourselves into one option. Was the only option that we were thinking of and so. It, it was worth at least fall, falls into the category of it can't hurt to ask, uh, given that we have this other resource and there are some potential benefits.
Would it be true that if we built on the high school property that the district would own the building? And if it were built on Sheffield or Sheldon site that the town would own the building, is that one difference?
Looks like.
Town, uh, so the way it is right now, the town owns the elementary buildings and the town owns the land that they sit on. So the land was given to Gil, Montague to build the high school, because the Sheffield School. Used to be the high school. So I don't know how the ownership of all of that happened, or if it wasn't a Gil and Montague owned building. But it was the high school building. Before in about nineteen seventy-two. When the high school was built. So I don't know how that came to be, or how the land changed hands, or what. Kind of monetary value that might have had, but we haven't researched that yet. So. The town. The ta, the land would have to revert back to the town. Are you laughing, Bill? Town, because the town would own the elementary school. It wouldn't be paid for by the two towns, it would be paid for by one town. I mean, I guess the district could own the. The land and the town could own the building. Not really sure.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, my question just has to do with, uh, how does all this play in with the potential six-town regionalization? Piece.
Really not at all.
Just the elementary building and so the six-town regionalization. Is talking about secondary.
Very.
Oh, only, okay.
Right.
Uh-huh. Yes.
Thanks.
I mean, those are the only students that would be involved in any kind of transitions.
Okay.
Anyone else have thoughts at the moment? We will put it on the next agenda, cuz I think that'll give people time to. Think about the two different proposals and perhaps have more questions as well. Anyone else at this point, Bill?
Yeah, it's, in all of this, I still think it would be great to. Get the response back, keep up your discussion with the town of Montague and the planner. Um, cuz I'm interested in to hear, I don't mean to be negative all the time, just some of it.
Well, Bill, I don't.
Balance.
Yeah, I don't think you were negative, I think you were, you were bringing up valid, certainly valid points and um, you know, we. Our conversation with them isn't going to just be about considering this proposal, we have plenty of questions that we want to ask about. Our, our initial proposal as well. So we're gonna continue to work with them on both of the ideas. And um, you know, hopefully bring something back to the committee that. The committee itself is able to weigh and give us some consensus on where they think that we should run with it.
Jennifer?
Yeah, sorry, I, I'm having a hard time separating if, for example, the elementary schools end up near the high school. Uh, you know, on the current land where the current high school is, and then some regionalization happens where maybe that's not a high school. I would just, I'm curious how that. Um, doesn't have any. Thing to do with it. Cuz, right, cuz wouldn't you?
I can answer that if you want.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess that's up to Jane, but I would love to.
No, go ahead, please, anybody with answers is welcome to answer.
The, the six-town deal. Is not proposing, proposing closing any schools that currently exist. So the high school will still be. Uh, preferably a high school, it could be the middle school. And Pioneer will be the other. Um. And then all the elementary schools will stay as they currently are. Um. Which is Lyden doesn't have one anymore and neither does, and Warwick is going in a totally different direction. Um. And that's about it. So things wouldn't change, it would still be a high school.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, we will bring this up again next time and thank you, Joanne. Alright, you're welcome.
Thanks, Joanne.
Uh, so, so moving along, the next item is approval of the updated acceptable use policy. And just because. Whenever possible, we like to use computer, confusing terminology. This is not actually a policy from our policy manual. This one is not. Go ahead, Brian, and tell us how it's used and where it's found.
So the idea of acceptable use policy is a term that's used predominantly across public education, but in, in many. You know, user-based areas where people have to uh. Take or use technology that involves um. A public or, or even a private users network, um, in, in our case also Chromebooks and so forth. That um, students and parents are required to sign off to meet certain. Expectations. And so the idea of it being, it's not a policy, it really is a procedure. That would go two places, it would go into the, the handbooks of each of the schools and as well would be a, a, a permission. I'm sorry, a signature-based document that would need to be reviewed by families when students are issued their Chromebooks or use. Um, so we have one in place already, this is just an updated version, but I didn't want people to think that. This would go into the policy manual, cuz it's not actually a policy, the policy. Acceptable use policy is just the name for a document like this.
And could I ask, I don't believe there are any changes this time, what we're approving from the last one that exists, is there?
I'd have Tina speak to that.
Tina?
Yeah, yes, there are cer, some changes.
Your changes, maybe it's a good point.
Right, significant changes and so I actually highlighted them. Um. So. Uh, sorry, just, I, I was gonna share, but just as a clarification. One of the things that we actually have, um, as I often mentioned is that we do apply for E-rate, which is. Allows us to um, pay a significant amount of um. Money for our internet connectivity, right? So E-rate provides us almost a ninety percent discount. Um, on our, uh, and almost translated to a annual fifty-six thousand, sixty thousand a year. Um, cost. So, um. One of the things that they do require is that we do have an acceptable use policy that meets. The SEPA, which is the Child Internet Protection Act policy. And so that's one of the impetus for. The changes that are, that will be here in the acceptable use policy. The other thing, the other change. The other impetus rather, is that now because of the high um. Need for privacy, um, the requirements, the new laws, um, both. Federal and state laws with regards to student privacy, um, one of the things that we've had to do was to change acceptable use policy because of. Um, because of that being one of the requirements, um, and more specifically really for student safety. Um, so that is why we had to make some changes to the acceptable use policy. The strongest base for this is that, um, you know, just say it upfront, um, the school. The Cam, Cam, Cambridge Public Schools has been like, you know, the, the. The model for, for many of us, for many of the schools. Um, and so to be very honest, we really. Practically a lot of us had actually just pulled from, from Cambridge Public School. Um, and so that, you know, just to give credit that they're the ones who did the hard work. Of really doing all this writing and all this research and. So just to present my screen, um. And we're just gonna make it a little. Bigger for everybody. Is that, yeah, so it's in that one. So, so the way I just did it was that I just like pretty much um, highlighted. The information that um, is a little different from our present acceptable use policy. Um, and it actually really just begins with the introduction of the school, um, the. District that needs to be corrected, sorry about that. Um. And basically that one last point in the se, one sentence there that highlights and points in the sentence. Wherein will be used in a responsible legal and ethical manner, practically already covers the kind of um. Uh, behavior that we were hoping for, that we look forward to with our, um. With the use of all our devices, our devices being covered such as computers, telephones, um, all the peripheral. Devices for printing, um, storing, archiving, duplicating, receiving information, um, that includes our phones. Believe it or not, that being um, now voice over internet pro, protocol phone, um, phones. Um. And it also covers the, the thing, the statement that. Our devices are to be used for educational purposes and for consistent with the academic. Um, activities of our school district. Um. It cannot be used for any illegal or commercial activities. It also uses a filtering system. Now what a filtering system basically is that it, we actually have a device in our. Um, and again, to meet E-rate requirements and SEPA regulations, we actually have to. Filter the data that comes out of our, um. Of our system. So it actually, you have to. It, it's, it's, it's something that will allow us to actually say no, nothing on inappropriate sites, no. That contain materials obscene, pornographic or harmful. So this is something, a statement that's new because we actually are saying, look. We do have a filtering system and we need our students and our teachers and our families to understand that, yes, we do see. Everything that's happening um, through our internet. Um, the filtering system is um, responsive, is monitored and um. Uh, decided on unfortunately, but by me. And my team because we are actually just, I am the signatory for your, for your E-rate. Um, the certifying person. Basically, I'm the one who's actually um, being, saying that, yep, we're doing it, right? So, and not paid enough for it, no, I'm joking. So now, um, it also really states that. You know, that, uh, the use of our, uh, of our um, device is a privilege, not necessarily just a right. For everybody. Um, now, another thing that is actually. To consider there, uh, new, is that we actually did say that, um, we do archive. We monitor and we retrieve data. So I don't know if you've watched, you know, obviously we've watched. Films like NCIS or CSI wherein, you know, people go and dig through stuff. That's. Part of my job I really do not like, is basically all the forensic work, um, having to dig through. Um, um, other like emails and everything, but then the thing is, it's that, that's basically. Um, something we have to keep on emphasizing that there's really no such thing as privacy in, in this. Um, in, in the internet world, right? Um, so in the digital world. So we can and will monitor and you'd note, note how the. Basically, the way it's written, it's a Gil Bon, Gil Montague Public School District. And the Gil Montague School Committee can and will monitor and investigate. So yes, you are able to actually tell me. To dig around. Not that I like to. So, the other thing's also, you know, and so following that is that there are certain things that are. Um. La, are. Expected of the responsible network users. And so, and so basically this one's here, it's just a list of things that you're. Not supposed to do, you know, you're for come, not to use it for commercial purpose, illegal criminal activities. Posting or disclosing other wa, disseminating personal information, um, you know, or posting or. Anything that's, that goes against our bullying policy, um, or that. There's to threaten, humiliate, bully, harass anybody, um, and you know, to just several lists that this. For cry, that disrupts the educational environment. So these are things that, you know, we're expecting that. Um, responsible computer users are not doing and doing within our network. Um, and just following our staff um, handbook. So the big difference is that, um. Is. Is for the, for the use of websites. Um, so basically this again brings in the new laws for. Um, data privacy, right? So, so for data privacy, we actually are requiring, requiring. That our vendors, our um, vendors that provide us with online resources that actually ask. Or require student data. Um, to sign data privacy agreements. Now this data privacy agreements then actually clearly say that, look. The student information that are, that lives within your online resource right now is ours. You cannot use it for any kind of marketing purposes, you cannot use any of our student. Data for any kind of like, um, benefit to you or disseminating the public, it's confidential data. And that if we leave that particular vendor, it stays with us. Um, so there are a lot. Believe it or not, it took us a long time to get Google itself to sign a, a data privacy agreement. Because Google does have a business side to it, a big money side to it, right? So, um. We actually, it was a big battle to be actually get Google itself, which is like a huge monster. In itself to um, sign our DPA. So. At least that we were able to do and, and, and were constantly, um, you know, looking at all our online resources. And making sure that our students' data. and making sure that our students' data remains safe. The other thing also is for, to be responsible for the use of the computer network and electronic devices. And basically, very clear, we, we, we made ourselves very clear about this. You never divulge your, give away your passwords for any of your devices or accounts to anyone. That's, you know, just a very basic thing that we're trying to not, you know, instill in our students, right? And in our adults, because it's something, it's really one of the things that will protect you. If you really think about it, being able to keep that kind of like security as a habit for yourselves is actually the one that will protect a lot of your identity. And then, so, so it just basically lists some of the other things again, and kind of just clarifies some of the things that we've already had in our, our previous electronic or acceptable use policy. One of this that I highlighted is basically, you know, putting in like a strong the use of, use of the materials within a distance learning course. So, so pandemic happened, right? And, you know, our online courses happened, our distance, we realized that we can do this remote learning. And so, one of the pieces that we had to put in there was something that covered that, that distance, distance learning courses. Whether we're doing it now or, you know, not doing it, but then it's just like a small piece of the, of a class or a course, or even if it's just, you know, a, a part of a Google classroom. So, this is something that covers that, the, the use of, of our devices and our software within the distance learning course. And one of the most important parts about this, again, is, you know, is really protecting students' data, right? So, so anything that they created, you know, the writing that they did within, you know, within Google, you know, those are things that we really have to just really protect because it's theirs, it's their right, and it's their safety. And, and that's pretty much it for, for the changes or the new stuff with regards to acceptable use policy. It's just really tighter and thus mention more things with regards to data privacy and with the use of devices and not really, you know, expecting any kind of sort of, of privacy within digital learning. Yes, Nick?
So, I have two questions.
Sure, yep.
First off, does the random suspicious list monitoring include webcams and microphones?
No, it does not. So, that's, that, that does not fall under our purview. So, we do have cameras in this high school, and that's more in, in disciplines part of the student handbook. So, we just.
So, the webcams on their devices and the microphones on their devices can't be remotely accessed?
No. So, one of the things though, to clarify, one of the things that we really did do institute is that we only use, we only use Google Meet for anything that involves students, right? So, right now for us, it's Zoom, right? But then for all our students, it's Google Meet. And the reason for that is because Zoom does not sign a DPA, right? So, because Zoom is not guaranteeing us that there is student protection and that they will keep student protection. Aside from the fact that it's really wicked expensive, the other thing is that really it's Google Meet that we feel more confident is safer for our students. So, basically, yeah, sorry.
And I have one other question. I read an article in Wired over the summer about a school district that was capturing data from student cell phones when they were plugging into their school issued laptops to charge them, but then still using them. And it was basically a component of the software that the district was using for monitoring purposes. Does our software have that capability?
No, because we actually have Chromebooks. So, Chromebooks are not capable of doing so. It's the Macintosh that's, Apple Schools are the ones, well, they're, they've got that plus. I mean, obviously, if they've got Apple, then they have the money to buy the software that does that kind of monitoring. Unfortunately, no, we do not. So, no, 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 we don't.
But I don't, I don't want that. We can't do that.
Yeah, just really thinking about monitoring, it's like one of the things that, you know, we, we want to be, we really want to be so upfront to our students and our teachers and saying, look, these are the things we can see, right? So, this are like, you know, when, when you, when you visit a website, we know because we get triggered, right? If it's an explicit website, it's an unsafe website, it's a website that you shouldn't be stepping into. There are like alarms going on in our, you know, something, and we're like, you know, immediately shutting it down. So, tho- those are the things, so we want very much for our students to understand that, yes, you know, we can see. You know, if, if you're, if, if there's any kind of like harassing or if there's even any kind of like writing that seems to sound dangerous, we want to be there. And we want to be able to support the student immediately. So, those are the kinds of filtering that we actually have for our students.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Tina? Okay, in that event, thank you, Tina. We will need to vote on this. So, I entertain a motion to approve the updated acceptable use policy.
I'll move it, Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you.
Second, Bill.
And Bill seconded it, thank you. Any more discussion about that? Okay, in that case, we'll have a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Oh, hold on.
Yes, John? Okay, you're muted, but I saw, yes. Haley?
Yes.
And Brooke?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. All right, our next item is addressing issues of equity. And I think Jean is usually joining us for that.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jean.
Diane and I are gonna present about.
Oh, Diane, good, good.
Yeah, some of the things that we've been working on related to issues with equity, so I'll share my screen. So, we just wanted to go through a couple of things and highlight what we've been working on and what are some of the things happening across the district related to equity. So, at the high school this week, a couple of things are happening. We, last year, students in grades nine through twelve viewed the film, I'm Not Racist, Am I? From the company Point Made Learning, and the film had been viewed the year before by some teachers. And over the course of the fall, teachers became trained, select number of teachers volunteered to become trained in how to facilitate discussions with students about this film. And so, we had it for ninth through twelfth grade last year, and we saw some really positive feedback from students as well as some really engaged students in reflection and discussion. And we're building it into our ninth grade advisory curriculum. So, as students come into ninth grade, they will be viewing this film and going through the facilitated discussion so that all high school students at any given year will have been trained and viewing this film. So, that's happening on Friday. We're really excited about that. Also happening on Friday, one of the initiatives that Brian has brought in is the Trained Active Bystander Program. So, last year, a cohort of high school students were trained in kind of how to facilitate learning activities for middle school students on, you know, stepping up and acting as bystanders. And this Friday as well, we're gonna have a second cohort that is trained. And so, we weren't able to get to the lessons last year at the middle school level because the cohort was so small. But now that we are training a second cohort on Friday, we're gonna begin doing some lessons and activities with middle school students to kind of build their capacity to kind of step up and, and, you know, talk about things with older students and make that impact. So, really excited about these two initiatives that are happening at the secondary level. And I'll let Diane take over the next two.
Hey, everyone. How's my volume?
Good.
Okay. So, yes, last Wednesday, we had a Special Education Parent Advisory Council meeting prior to the CPAC, which is the acronym. We like to have lots of acronyms in special education. So, prior to the Special Education Advisory Council meeting, I had surveyed all families. So, I sent out a email list with a Google survey and tried to get a sense of kind of interest times, if people wanted to meet virtually, if people were interested in sort of meeting about developmental or age span levels and sort of some topics that might be of interest for parent participation or for parent workshops. And so, I do, we did have that survey data that is, that survey is still active. If you know of anybody who would like to complete that survey, it was, as I said, emailed out as a link. We did have, Jean's being kind here on her slide, solid, it was a somewhat small turnout, but it was, you know, it was a good group of folks. I had a larger response to the survey. But people did come out for the meeting, people did, one person was at swim practice while they were participating at the meeting. And someone else had to go offline to deal with the dinner issue and a preschooler who had a need. But I think that's sort of the, sort of modern meetings now is that it allows people to participate in the virtual environment when they might not otherwise be able to. So, next Wednesday, we are doing an in-person LPAC meeting. And, you know, this meeting will include information about our curriculum, our district supports, and, and generally information about what interests our LPAC and moving forward. Both of these organizations have basically a sort of statutory expectation of contributing to budget thinking and planning and program development. So, both of these groups have been surveyed around some of their, well, they will be next week with the LPAC about some of their interests in terms of district programming or some of the priorities that these families recognize. So, I did want to just share that information. We are having pizza next Wednesday, if you're all looking for a dinner plan. Pizza salad, possibly apple crisp. And, and so, and one additional thing we wanted to share out is Tina has initiated this as part of a statewide ed tech systems project. The district is working with Desi and Learning Accelerator, a vendor, to address an area of equity related to technology. So, in our problem of practice, we've decided to focus the work of our ed tech team on differentiating Plus portals for our multilingual families. This will include a translated version of Plus portals in support for understanding the uses of the portal, particularly at the secondary level. So, this work has inspired, you know, just general conversation among our ed tech team, but also really getting quality feedback from Learning Accelerator and the Desi contact and just other cohorts of, of districts who are really looking at, again, problems of practice and using technology. And that ed tech program has a equity lens. So, all of the cohort work has to include kind of consideration of equity issues in, in technology. And then, this Friday, which I feel like Friday's a busy day for all of us in the district, this Friday, we are continuing to meet with our culturally responsive practices leadership team, which is an ongoing effort. So, high quality professional development in that program as well. And I just wanted to turn this over for questions or anything that people might want to ask of Jean or I.
Jennifer?
Hi, thanks. I have a question about, so, and I apologize if I missed this because I was reading along and, and listening, but special education, parent advisory council meeting. So, these are a group of people pre, like they chose at some point to join this committee or something. And then, I'm just curious, like how many, what is the diversity present? Like, how many people and?
Sure. So, an invitation was sent out to every student family through email for both first email contact or second email contact in the district for everyone whose child is recognized as having an individualized education plan. So, about two hundred plus emails went out inviting people. We included a survey link in advance with that email, just notifying people that we were having a virtual meeting. We did a Parents' Rights in Special Education Training program, which I actually, I don't think I have it posted on the website, but I will have that presentation posted to for families. And so, we did an annual Parents' Rights presentation. And we also just tried to do what I would call an organizational meeting. So, districts are expected to have an advisory council for families of children with disabilities, you know, known as the CPAC. And it's been a hard, between the pandemic and between some of the logistics of family life, in which we actually explored some in that night of the presentation, kind of like what, you know, what we think we know challenges are for families to be involved. And yet, one more thing, and what, and then providing a voice for families to be able to share with us what some of those challenges are. So, that's sort of what that meeting was about. It is an annual requirement, and we hope to, you know, have monthly meetings. One other thing that came out of that meeting, which was one of our survey questions, is that people would like for myself or an education team leader, but essentially a representative from special education to have an office hour to be able to just sort of have drop in. So, I would love to have like a coffee hour and try to figure out, you know, if there's just to sort of informal way for people to talk about, you know, issues of equity and for children with disabilities in the district. So, I will be inviting you not just for pizza next Wednesday, but also for coffee at some point to, to do a coffee hour with myself. And then, we are gonna be doing a follow-up meeting in January with, you know, again, interested parties. Sometimes it, you know, if you, if you build it and you keep promoting it, we're hopeful that people will come.
Is it a similar process for the December fourteenth, the District Wide English Language Parent Advisory Council? Is that also like a, a large outreach and then you sort of hope for the most engagement or the highest engagement possible?
Right. And they have sort of similar functions in terms of advising district administration and advising the school committee and having, you know, again, actively seeking voice. The LPAC group is a smaller cohort, and it, it's more familial and that a lot of our families who are English learners are connected to each other and one another. So, it, I'm expecting a higher turnout for that event. And it's also more functional for that cohort to meet in person versus virtually for and, and that's sort of the feedback we've received. We had a great LPAC meeting last year with families, super well attended. So, we're excited about this and again, trying to continue to develop that group.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have anything for Diane or Jean? Okay, well, thank you both very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Night. And next on our agenda, the life-threatening allergies policy. It's a third reading and we will need to vote it this evening. And we actually will need to, if it's acceptable, do it in two parts. The policy JLCAA, which is Peanut Peanut Product and Tree Nut Policy. When we've discussed this the last two times, we are going When we've discussed it, this, the last two times, we are going to, if it's acceptable with the group, to entertain a motion to rescind this policy. Um, we had talked about the fact that it's going to be allergy awareness and, um, not necessarily guaranteeing that there never will be peanut products anywhere. Um, I understand, Brian, that that's considered, um, legally something that's pretty impossible to guarantee.
Yeah, and it's, um, it was strongly recommended by our group of nurses as well as our food service director who, um, you know, shared their thoughts in, in some notes that they shared from the last meeting. But, um, I've, I've not come across a district that has remained nut-free for those who went nut-free during COVID. So, um, it's actually safer to have, um, nut-aware schools share the information rather than doing the, the sort of, for lack of a better phrase, the false advertising of saying we're nut-free when, you know, it's certainly conceivable that any kid on any given day could sneak a peanut butter and jelly sandwich into school. And, um, you know, you have somebody who has a, uh, an, an serious food allergy, believing that none of it's around. It really isn't, uh, in the best interest of our kids and, and their safety.
So the first item we'd like to under this is to entertain a motion to rescind policy GJLCAA, which is Gil Montague Regional School District Peanut Peanut Product and, and Tree Nut Policy. We'd just like to vote to rescind it if that's possible. Okay, Nick moved it. I heard a couple. I think Haley won that one. And we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion or questions anyone might want to ask? Jennifer?
Yeah, um, so we're saying that we're not a nut-free school. I, I tried, sorry, I didn't read this in advance. I was just trying to scan it real quick and sort of get a, a grasp of the dangers.
Correct.
Like, what is the?
We're saying, right, right. What I'm, what I'm recommending and what the, the recommendation of our, our healthcare folks as well as those folks in other school districts who do the same thing, is that it is safer to not purport yourself to be a nut-free school district when in fact, um, it really is impossible to manage. Uh, again, this was something that came up in the early days of COVID and it is, uh, something that really needed to be reviewed, at least biannually. And it's time in doing that review and consulting with the folks that we needed to. It was really stronger, strongly recommended that we remove it and make some mild updates to the procedures related to the life-threatening allergy policy.
Right. And I think that's a great question because even though we're hoping to rescind this short piece, we're going to keep policy JLCEA, which is about life-threatening allergy policies and the, um, regulation that goes with it, which is peanut, peanut product and nut tree procedures. So people will know what we're doing to help, you know, ensure there aren't issues. But we're just getting rid of the part that says there will never be anything. We can guarantee that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, but good question. So if that's acceptable, we have a motion on a second. We will vote to rescind policy JLCAA with a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And me. Yes, thank you. And the second part of this is we would like to ask for a motion and a second to approve policy JLCEA, which is the Life Threatening Allergy Policy Statement, which we received, explaining about allergies and how, um, the district keeps children safe, the purpose and the scope. And, and the added to that is the regulation. It, in your copy, it, you should change the letters at the top to JLCEA-sle- dash R. It's JLCEA instead of AA. That was a misprint. And this section has the peanut, peanut product and tree nut procedures. And there are highlights on your copy of the things that have been added to that regulation that changes it from what it was.
So there are just two minor changes. The highlighted one, rather than compelling all the schools to do an allergy awareness week, we use that as an example of one way that schools should consider promoting allergy awareness. However, um, we're more committed to signage and the nurses are committed to doing, uh, more frequent and intermittent education with students than simply having a week dedicated to it. So we just turned that into an IE as an example. The second change is in number four, where it's, the original said post-nut safe signs on all entrance and exit and classroom doors. That would change to post nut-free signs in designated areas of buildings as needed or recommended by nurses and administration. So in other words, changing from, um, not entirely nut-free facilities, but targeting areas of the building, um, that would be nut-free. Otherwise, everything else remains the same.
Okay. And I believe it's fine to, uh, vote JLCEA and JLCEA-dash-R together, since they are combined. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
Come on.
Nick, thank you.
I'll second.
And who was that? Did I miss?
Sorry, that was Brooke. Hi.
Thanks. Sometimes I can't really write and look away successfully. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I said yes.
Okay, thank you. I missed it. Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, thank you.
Just add one thing. Um, I wanted to thank you to Marcy Kelly. Um, all of these documents were in PDF and, um, she did a remarkable job of removing the ancillary information and, uh, spent a, a pretty good chunk of time reformatting the documents so that we could work with it to update it. So thank you, Marcy.
Oh, yes. She does an amazing amount of work behind the scenes, getting everything set for us and prepared. We do appreciate it. Thank you. Um, we don't have minutes to approve this time. If there are any agenda requests, we'll be, I'm sorry, Nick?
First question, how long will this policy take to implement now that we've changed it?
Um, I'm going to be meeting, I'm hoping to be, uh, get some time with the nurses tomorrow to have them review a communication that I would like to send out to families. Um, really, ideally for me, Nick, I, I would like to get it going within the next week or so, so that people are aware, but I don't want to have it, um, you know, broadly advertised until such time as we're prepared to communicate with families the difference. So I'm anticipating just a few days and an opportunity to, um, have the materials reviewed by the food service director and the healthcare professionals in the district.
Do we know if the nurses already have plans in place for the students that we're aware of that have life-threatening food allergies?
Yes, because they're aware of each of the life-threatening food allergies. Anybody who has a, or, or life-threatening allergies in general, because some of them might have bee allergies or, um, latex allergies. They have all of those students in a, a separate file and they communicate with the individual teachers. Um, they, they do have meetings with parents of parents who request, because it's good to get that additional information and principals are aware because they have the master list as well in case something comes up. So all of that background work is done, you know, really in the first five days when nurses start before the school year starts. So the, all that information is out there already, uh, just to those people who need to know.
Thanks. Good point. Any agenda requests? Please get them to Bill, Brian, or myself by early next week, when we'll have agenda planning. Uh, the only other thing we have to note is our next two meetings are December 20th and January 10th. And then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Heather?
Second, Jennifer.
And Jennifer, second. I don't believe there's any discussion, so we'll just take a vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jennifer? Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Haley?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.